Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and is also being broadcast live on the Town of Pennfield's website, pennfield.org, on the Town of Pennfield's Government Access Channel 1303. Actually, just DVR'd this, Andy. I DVR'd this meeting. Right, at home. And on streaming media devices, Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search Pennfield TV in your device's App Store, and it is free. If you'd like to address the board on any public hearing matter tonight, there'll be specific public participation opportunities for each matter after the board responds to the applicant's presentation and asks its own questions and expresses its own concerns. And anyone that is participating remotely can also comment by calling 585-340-8771, or also by electronic submission through the website as well, pennfield.org. Tonight's meeting is going to start with our work session. We just have a few, one table item to go over, and then we'll address tonight's applications to see if there's any need for clarity on any of them. And then we'll, we won't take a recess. There's going to be no need for a recess. And then we'll get into the public hearings. We'll ask the applicant to come up to one of these tables and give us name and address, and then explain to the board. The board member will likely walk you through your application. We do have thorough written applications on both of the items tonight. We've reviewed them, seen the sites, so we're prepared to help you through with the application. We'd like to say every, every meeting that we think the town does a really good job of making sure that neighbors and citizens are aware of what's happening in their neighborhood and know where the application is going to be heard. And the town does that so people know that they can come in and speak their mind about something if they choose to do so. Town does that by sending out postcards to people that live within a certain number of feet of the property, the subject property, by having the applicant post a sign out in front of the property. You drive by, we've all seen them. Post the agenda on the website, post the agenda here at Town. And again, we think it's good because, honestly, we'd like to hear from you, and we certainly want to give due consideration to everybody's concerns. And that having been said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, great. So, let's see, we do have one, as I said, one table application. That is the Verizon Cell Tower down on Pennfield Road. And we have our special counsel here, Mr. Mancuso. If you could just sort of give us an update on that, and we'll, pretty much, it's going to be tabled again tonight with the consent of the applicant?
Yes, that's correct, Chairman. So, the, the town has received a portion of the consultant reports that it has requested from one of its consultants. We are still waiting for additional information for the RF consultant, and the applicant had reached out to the town and asked whether they could be allowed additional time to make that submission to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and in light of that information, consented to the extension of the shot clock. So, the planning board at the last meeting had adopted a resolution to extend the shot clock to August 12th, 2022, and we would similarly be looking for the Zoning Board of Appeals to adopt a resolution to extend to August 12th as well.
Okay, and then obviously to table?
And to table the application.
To the August, what date is the August?
Wasn't it extended to September 9th?
Yeah, I thought it was September.
Yeah, you're right. I'm looking at the wrong calendar. It would have been September...
9th?
Originally, it was the 12th of August.
9th. Yes, it would be September 9th. So, to table to the August meeting of the zoning board, but it was extended to September because the planning board will need to, obviously, make a decision after this board.
Okay, so a motion, a joint, I'll make a motion, a two-part motion. One is to table it to the next meeting, table the application. The second is to agree to the extension of the shot clock for the application to whatever date Counselor just placed on the record.
September 9th, 2022. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
All right, so I've made that motion, and Andres seconded it. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's good that George is sitting next to me because he reminded me that I skipped the item of approval of the minutes from the June meeting. So, I'd ask for a motion on those.
Motion.
All right. Going to give that to Andres, and we're going to have George as a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Tonight, we have two applications. I'll just ask if anybody has a need for clarification on the first one, which is 2070 Empire Boulevard. Any clarification on that? I know that where that is simultaneously being, see you later, John. Thank you.
Take care.
Being considered by the planning board. What's the next date on the planning board on that? That's all right. It's not tonight. It's going to be sometime subsequent to tonight. So, you know, obviously, we're here to hear the application, but because the planning board's still working on it, I think it's probably fair to say this is going to be tabled as well. But any questions for clarification?
No.
All right. Second application tonight is 1651 Empire Boulevard, Busy Street. Anybody have any questions for clarification on that? No? All right. Good, then, let's go right to the first application, please.
Rochester Gas and Electric, Three City Center, 180 South Clinton Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14604. Request approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow the construction of an electrical substation with greater lot coverage than allowed under Section 250-5.6-D2 of the code, less setbacks than required under Section 250-5.6-D3 of the code, taller fencing than allowed under Section 250-7.1-D of the code, and less buffer than required under Section 250-7.2-A of the code at 2070 Empire Boulevard. The properties currently or formerly owned by JJ &amp; A Development LLC and his own limited business, SBL number 093.02-1-1.121. This is application number 22Z-0041.
Okay, if you could identify yourselves by giving us name and address for record, and then George will walk you through the application.
Mary Steblin, Lobella Associates, 300 State Street, Rochester, New York, 14614.
My name is Eric Thorne. I'm with Argini, and we're at Three City Center, Rochester, New York, 14614.
Great, thanks.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for coming. So, I did have a chance to look through the application. It was very detailed and specific, so thank you for that. It does make it a lot easier for us when we have all the details. I also drove out and took a look at the site so that I could speak a bit more intelligently about the layout. My understanding is, is that you are relocating the current, the current, both gas and electric infrastructure from its current site to the new site to facilitate expansion and growth is, in essence, what's going on. When you, when you took a look at the size of the current property, my understanding was you were, it was ascertained you would not be able to collectively, at the same time, expand and also keep the service running in its current state. I also did get a chance to take a look at the residential areas and around there. So, I did have a couple of questions. I wanted to dive in and around the, the structure and the fence, if I could. My first question is, is the building that you are proposing to, to house the, I believe, the gas sections?
Just to clarify, there is no gas, gas relocation. So, the confusion may be that it's gas insulated switchgear? So, it's electrical equipment?
All electrical. Okay, thank you for the clarification. Appreciate that. But the building itself kind of stands out a little bit. It does obviously seem a classic kind of standard building. I know there are some other locations that we've seen that are a bit more, they're built to blend in a little bit more with the surrounding. Was that looked at as well as an option?
So, that is something that came up during the planning board meeting? So, did you want to speak to that, Eric?
Yeah, so, you know, we've, we've designed the footprint of the area and the, the building itself to, we'll say, the, the least amount of footprint possible for a building to enclose most of the infrastructure that's needed to rebuild the station. We're moving the station from a completely outdoor station, which is what it is existing, and trying to house as much of the infrastructure indoors as possible in that building. It is, we do have standards that we have to meet, and some of those, you know, do require it to be certain, certain materials. And it is, again, it is the smallest footprint possible to house that, that material. However, we, you know, we have, we do understand, you know, there is a, a community impact potentially. So, we have, you know, kind of gone above our standards in allowing a black fence as opposed to our, our standard chain link fence that we would normally use, as well as some vegetation screening, kind of go above and beyond to help minimize some of those, you know, those visual impacts. But, but otherwise, you know, we feel that this building does sort of fit in with the, the limited business district that this, this parcel is, is owned.
Yeah, understand that, but that the, the parcel itself is zoned such, but right across the street is residential. So, I just wanted to understand a little bit more if you had kind of thought through the process of the, of the look and feel of the location and the impact to the residents in that particular area. To go back to your fence, which is my second question, did you have a comment?
Yes. So, in response to comments from the Town staff, we revisited the fence, and we proposed last week to use a more decorative black metal fence instead of, instead of the chain link fence. So, that would be a, you know, more appropriate.
Is there any reason that the fence can't be of a type that would completely block a view into the, the, the infrastructure versus one that you'd be able to see through?
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, with it being a, a substation, you know, we have to keep, you know, security of that station in mind. So, you know, we have an obligation that we need to maintain a perpetual line of sight from the front to the back of the, of the station. So, you know, from, from a security standpoint, it can't be completely blocked off where we can't see into it. However, you know, we are willing to, to put in that, you know, sort of privacy screening so that, you know, there, it's not a complete open view into the station. There is, there is that screening there.
So, I appreciate that. The challenge is, if you're going to plant the arborvitae, which should grow eventually to create a complete barrier, wouldn't that be impacting your ability to be able to actually see all the way through the fence anyways? And seems to me that still would be something that could be looked at.
So, I, I think the arborvitae would be, you know, spaced accordingly where it's not going to create a complete hedge in front of the, the station. And, you know, when, when they do go in, they'll be at a size that provides sort of that instant screening. It's not, they're not going to start at, you know, say, two feet and then, you know, eventually grow, grow into, into each other. They're going to be, we'll, we'll say, between five and six feet or so, you know, as they're, as they're planted. So, it is an instant screening, and they'll be spaced accordingly.
Okay. So, more decorative rather than a screen?
Correct.
Okay. Then, kind of switching discussion topics on you, unless somebody else had a question on the fencing. The, the location, which requiring, obviously, a significant number of, of exceptions. I'd like to guess, go back and ask, have you reevaluated the possibility at all of being able to use the existing site, as an example? And is there the possibility of being able to relocate this on that current property, perhaps work to get a better setback, a little bit farther back on the property so so many exceptions wouldn't be necessary?
Yeah, so, when we're designing these projects, are, we do an alternative assessment for where we can build these, these stations. And first and foremost, we always look to use the existing, the existing station footprint. That assessment has been completed, and there's commercial properties on either side of the existing station. And in order to, to upgrade the infrastructure that we need to meet the growing demand within the, the Town of Pennfield, we need to incorporate some additional infrastructure, such as, you know, two transformers. And quite frankly, the existing site just cannot support that. The addition of that second transformer, one, they have to maintain a certain spacing per the energy codes. And also, there's a bunch of existing underground infrastructure within the existing station. And in order to do so, we'd have to take that station completely offline, and then that would, you know, pose an impact to, to the town residents as well, so.
Understood. And so, to, to the second point, then, on the current, on the proposed property, is there, because I know that the property itself is larger than just the piece that you're looking to, to leverage, is there a possibility of relocating it a little bit farther back on that property and negotiating something like that?
I'm talking about on the existing?
No, no, not the existing, on the, on the new property.
On the new property. Yeah, so we've, in, in the design, we've, we've tried to keep the infrastructure kind of as far back on the property as possible. From the, the north and the, the west sides, there is, behind the, the property that is already being developed by the, the urgent care in there as well. So, we need to maintain our, our structures, certain distances from the property line as well, from energy codes. And, you know, those transformers are pretty much set, you know, where, where they can be from the, the property line. And, you know, we obviously want to keep those, you know, as far away from the existing roadway as possible, just to create a, a better view, I guess, and, and less impact to the, the traffic along the, the roadway. So, we've tried to kind of space things out on the outskirts of the property as much as possible.
Okay. And then my final question is around the, the transformers. Is there any way that they can be enclosed in a similar type building as the, the other?
So, they, they wouldn't be in a similar type building, but we are actually, I know it's not on, on these plans, but, you know, based on the, the feedback that we got from the planning board, we are actually going to enclose those transformers in concrete block. So, it'll be basically a sound wall around those transformers, and it'll also provide a visual barrier so you won't see those from the roadway when you're looking in. It'll, it'll be a, a concrete block in various colors and textures that, you know, can be, can be chosen.
Okay. And the last question, not to do with that particular site, but in general, you, you did take a look at other venues, other possible sites. I know there are some other vacant lots up and down within that general vicinity. Were any of those considered? And are they options or not options?
Yeah, so, we have looked at some, some other properties. You know, when we're, we're looking at these, you know, as I said, we want to try and look to use the existing parcel. If that's not possible, then we try to find another area that is within a relative, relatively close to where the existing station is so that there isn't an impact to the existing, you know, overhead or underground connections to that station. So, you know, this, this parcel is, from what we found, is, is pieces that would be usable, the closest to that existing station, and have, you know, the least impacts with additional easements from, you know, other property owners and stuff like that. I know there are some other properties down, down the road potentially, but, you know, in looking at those, it would, one, increase the, the cost of the overall scope of the project, and, you know, there's a lot of other infrastructure that has to be connected to that.
That's, those are my questions for now, Chairman.
Okay, any other questions? Andres or Laura?
I think my first one's going to be, you know, how was the site selected? But I think, I think you've answered that now. Thank you.
You mentioned earlier an assessment, a document or a review where you guys perform to look at other sites. Is that actually a written document?
It's, it's not.
Before you answer, the next question's going to be, will you share a copy with us? I want you to know.
So, that's, it's, it's a review that's sort of done internally with our, our different planning groups.
Sure.
And I can look to see if, if, you know, that document can be shared with, with the board here.
Okay. So, there is a document. You just need to see whether you're able to share it.
Yes.
Okay, well, we certainly would appreciate that because that's obviously a pretty important question, and, and these guys have already asked it. Again, you may have addressed this, but I want to make sure it's clear in my mind. Why is it that you must move now?
So, the, the infrastructure within Pennfield is, is growing.
Okay.
And in order to meet those future demands, you know, we make assessments of the future growth in the areas, as well as, you know, what, what our current, you know, stations can provide. And, you know, we want to just get ahead of the game on that. So, you know, we make those, those long-term decisions, and, you know, by acting now, we can help, you know, grow with the community as it's growing in the area. And it's, it's certainly developing, as, as you know.
Sure.
And, you know, there's going to be a, a high demand with that.
Okay. So, 2075, where you are now, I mean, literally, right across the road.
Right.
That space is obviously not, in your opinion, not adequate to build out as you must to address what you think is, well, what you probably know is coming in the future. Okay. So, let me ask this. You've mentioned transformers. What would be on 20, say, the new site? What would be on the proposed site in the, in the future that's not on the current site?
So, right now, the current site is a completely outdoor station. This, that was, we'll call it old design technology. And, you know, we, we look to, and the, like, the transformer and, and equipment, I think this station was maybe the, the 60s or so.
Okay.
And the reliability and resiliency of the equipment has, has been improved. And with that, we would be installing those, those newer equipment upgrades on the new parcel. And, you know, a lot of the, the new infrastructure is, you know, completely enclosed in, in that building. And, you know, it, it does require a second transformer as well. So, that's, you know, that's the heavy part of the, the new equipment that will go on the, the new parcel. And based on this site, you know, there just isn't that room to install that second transformer without, you know, impacting the current underground connections that, that go in there.
Okay. Well, and, and you can, you can almost say the same thing about the site across the street, given the fact that you're asking for a, a lot of variances and significant variances, that you would probably prefer if, if that site at 2070 were larger.
Yes.
And you didn't have to be in front of us anyway, asking for variances.
Exactly.
But it is what it is. So, again, I do think it's important, one of the factors that we're going to have to consider is whether there are any other feasible alternatives. So, that's why it's really important, not that we don't take your word for it, but it's, it's important that we, to us, that we make sure that there, you've, you've done your homework, you've considered other sites, because there will be impacts here. Frankly, there's probably going to be impacts everywhere, but, you know, that's true with any application. But, okay.
Can I ask a silly question?
Sure.
What happens to the old site?
In this case, the existing substation would be decommissioned following the construction
and energization of the new site.
Is any of that stuff reusable into the new site? Or is that going to just be a shell of empty parking lot, concrete?
I believe the transformer would be taken to another location to be reused. I don't know about the other equipment.
Yeah, so, Mary is right. The transformer will be taken to another location and reused, you know, where, where it's needed there. And then, you know, we will decommission the rest of the equipment, and, you know, a lot of the, you know, metal components get recycled and things like that. And then, as far as the existing lot, as of right now, you know, there are no, I guess, plans, but, you know, we're, we're certainly open to, you know, suggestions on, you know, what to, what the, the town suggests to use for that, that parcel as well.
Okay. There's no intent to sell, as far as you know at this point?
As far as I know, not, not right now.
All right.
And is it, is it feasible to use both sites? In a sense, you know, could you, could that site, you know, one site comes on, could that site then be an expansion site as well where you wouldn't necessarily need the, the same amount of overhead at the other site? I guess you follow what I'm saying? Like, if you brought one site online that, let's say, didn't have to be, that wasn't too large for that site? Because right now, based on the variances that I'm seeing, it's almost like you're trying to fit too much onto that site. Could that site be, you know, brought down a little bit, and then the other site utilized for, you know, you're still have your same connections? All that, all that infrastructure's still there where you could bring on a secondary site that wasn't, you know, it's, you know, obviously, wouldn't be as large, but then that would account for growth as well? Honestly, there's double the overhead, but...
Almost like keeping one of the transformer, transformers?
Or new one, whatever.
And then the other one?
I, I don't have an exact answer on that as far, you know, I'm, I'm not, not an engineer by trade, you know, that makes those, those types of assessments. But the, I can say, and I've stated before, that in order to do, you know, the, this infrastructure in the existing station is, is aging, and we want to get ahead of, ahead of that. So, you know, we would, we would still have to take that existing station completely offline to do any sort of upgrades on that, which is something we, we want to avoid because it, you know, because of the impact, excuse me, impacts that it poses. So, you know, when, when we're doing these, we try to keep, you know, everything within that, that one parcel so we can keep the existing station online and then, you know, cut everything over when we're, when we're done. But if it's, we're only doing half of what we need on the, the one parcel, we can't necessarily cut off the existing station because it's, it's not, not at its full capacity.
If I could add something to that, too?
Sure, of course.
Generally, when these new substations are constructed, they are also modernized, and a lot of the equipment is then set up with control systems that are all unmanned and able to be operated by, you know, a central control location rather than somebody having to come physically to the site to switch things over. So, if you have a faulty circuit somewhere, you know, you can press a button from, you know, somewhere far away from that station and be able to, to power it up in the, in another direction. And I think that that would probably limit the feasibility of using both stations because you would not be addressing that problem of needing to modernize and be able to, you know, tackle everything at the one site and, and still have to go out and, you know, physically change something over at the, at the other site.
Sure. In terms of the design for the site, is there something you could share that said, you know, this transformer can't sit any farther into the parcel, and this transformer can't sit any farther, and this building has to be placed here versus 10 feet closer, and this fence has to be on the property line versus five foot closer to the building? You know, is, is there something you could share with those, you know, criteria that we could say, okay, this is literally the only design that will work on this parcel because you're mandated by whoever to have these pieces of equipment placed here, and this building has to be here, and this fence has to be at zero setback, or those kind of things?
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly something that, you know, I can reach back to my, you know, my engineers and, and, you know, get sort of what those, those requirements are that we, we design to.
Sure. Yeah, because just because there's like, a lot of applicants come here and we say, okay, is there an alternative feasible solution that you could provide for this site that maybe doesn't require as much of a variance, but it still meets your requirements?
Yeah.
Because that, I think that would be helpful, at least from my perspective.
And Dan, I'm also interested, I know that they're also in front of the, the planning board, what, where that status is currently, and is there any out, is there, is there outstanding documentation to be provided to them that would be useful for us to see as well? that would be useful for us to see as well?
Okay, well, certainly, anything that the applicant shares with the planning board, you know, we could have access to that as well, I'm sure. No secrets between those boards.
But I believe that there were a couple of outstanding things from that, that was in flight there. And I wonder what that status was and what the timing was for that.
Oh, you mean currently?
Currently, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we were asked to put together, I guess, a report of why we can't use the existing station. So we are in the process of creating that document. And we will, you know, share it with the planning board and the zoning board.
And given Anders' good question before, if you could make part of that, why you can't use them jointly?
Okay.
You know, you've somewhat answered it, but if you could, you know, take the time to augment it, that'd be great. You guys okay, at least for now? So what sort of noise will be generated from use of the site? If it's, you're granted permission to go there?
So the transformers that will be...
Yeah, any noise.
Well, the transformers would be the...
That's it?
The only item that we would expect to generate noise.
Okay.
And they have considered in the design low noise transformers, given the residential application. And then the addition of the walls that would surround the transformers would also act as a barrier to mitigate noise.
Okay, so...
And they're sited at the north end of the, of the site in order to keep them as far away from residential applications as possible.
When you say low noise, is there some sort of objective criteria that's... If there is, and you can, again, it's going to be tabled, so if you want to supply that. And maybe, what's nice, at least from my perspective, when we've had potential noise issues, to have like a comparison. You know, the first one's always a jet airplane and then a rock concert, you know, the second. And then honestly, one that's really apropos here is a Little League game.
Or just the ambient road noise going by, I think is also...
I live over behind Walmart, and I can hear the Little League games on a clear night, yeah. So, but that would be nice, though, that kind of comparison.
Okay, sure.
All right, any other questions at this point from the board?
No, sir.
Okay, I don't, I'm not sure if I have the computer on correctly and such, but I don't see any phone calls or any electronic submissions. So if someone can confirm that for me while we call folks up, I'd appreciate that. Well, look at that.
Look at that.
Somebody from above or below. All right, so the first speaker that we have listed is Jim Vitale, I believe, of 81 Seabury. You want to come over? Let's use this table, that way you guys can respond to questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the opportunity. And I was here at the planning board meeting also.
Okay.
And I just have a few comments, and for the point of clarification. And I appreciate this opportunity to represent our little neighborhood. Couple of statements, personally, you know, I maintain that the relocation of the substation to the parcel that's intended will have an adverse effect on the neighborhood, both aesthetically, environmentally, and financially. Now, waiving any ordinances, as the request is to waive four ordinances that exist to a large conglomerate corporation is really something that I'm very concerned about. Now, a lot of people feel that RG&E, whatever they want, will get, because it's not just RG&E. As you know, they are a subsidiary of a bigger company, which is a subsidiary of a very large company that exists in Spain, okay? It's not the old RG&E that's a Rochester business. And when any large conglomerate wants something, they usually find a way to get it. And as a retired person, homeowner, that lives in the area, it's going to change the structure of that area. Right now, and you drove through the field, you probably walked the field, it's a pastoral setting, rather pleasant. On the other side, you have the apartments, and a lot of kids live there. And they'll come over and they'll play in that field. There's also animals. My wife showed a picture last time of a fawn that was there. We found turtles in that area. It's a very pleasant place. And when we bought the house we live in, in 2016, one of the attractive pieces of that is the fact that you have that empty field. As you're driving out, it's there. Now, the complexion is going to change. What I've read is there'll be a large metal shed that'll be put there. Stone will lay in the area, where there's grass now, and a large fence. And the fence has changed, but it's still asked that it be eight feet high with another foot barrier above that, according to what I read. Now, that may have changed since. But it's a very pleasant area with the S curve of the street, where the plan is to put a driveway into that S curve, a cut, so they'll have access to it. Plus, there'll be lighting from dusk to dawn. Though it's supposed to be low-level lighting, it'll be lighting. So it's going to change that area. Now, putting Arbor Viti up is fine. How high is it going to be? This is going to start out at two feet, and it's going to take 15 to 20 years to get to six feet to kind of block it. I don't know, probably won't be around by then. But it's kind of a sad situation to see something fall by the wayside just to make it more convenient for a large company to relocate. And it was brought up about other areas that they could relocate to that are now vacant. And it was stated that it would cost millions of dollars, but I have no idea if it's going to cost millions of dollars. And I think it's just a matter of convenience for a large corporation to take a vacant, grass-filled lot out of circulation to put a substation in a residential area, okay? The, and I know all of us have to buy by ordinances. I had to when I put my deck on after we bought our house. I had to when I purchased the storage shed. I wanted the storage shed to be six feet wide. I couldn't, I had to make it five feet to fit into the guidelines. And I did that. And I'm just a simple homeowner that, just trying to make ends meet. The other issue that we had is we've all, in Penfield, been reassessed. And my assessment went up. Now, if they put a substation in, is my assessment going to go down? What I've been researching is when you have a substation in a residential area, it's not as appealing to people to want to move there if I wanted to sell my house. It just isn't a pleasant view. And that's a real concern. One of the things that we're looking at is the fact that this fencing and this property will basically take away the entire green area. And if it does cost a little bit more to take another look at a different location, take another look at the present situation, and maybe make some changes to where they presently are, there's nothing wrong with them doing that. I think a more thorough investigation needs to be done than just to take this property away because it's convenient, it's across the street. And so we're just going to put in a building, fence, and stone, and everybody will be happy. Well, we won't be happy about it. And I'm sure the kids across the street who play a lot in that area are going to lose the green space. And aren't we concerned with green space? I don't know, I am. So that's just my comment. There's just, you know, a few other things, but I'm going to let it go at that. I thank you for hearing me, I appreciate the opportunity. And thanks for your diligence and the questions that you've asked to take a strong look at waiving these four ordinances that they are requesting to be waived. Appreciate it, thank you.
Before you go, you said you've done some research about property values and...
Right, usually three to 5%.
Yeah, whatever you have, if you want to email to Andy, you know, we'll take a look at that, too. I mean, not that, again, not that we're not taking your word for it, but if you have some articles or whatever, you know, we'll share them with the applicant, give the applicant a chance to address those as well. Anything in that regard would certainly be helpful. And let me, the play area, Andy, you had, you had, who owns that now? Is that, that's part of the parcel?
That's part of the parcel that's being cut off.
Right, and so, and, you know, kids are kids, and they play, where they play and people allow them to play. But I just, I do want to understand correctly that the area, I think, that you're talking about where the kids play, I think we've seen it, but that is part of this parcel. And it's, the owner, if the owner wanted to, I suppose, could put a sign up that says, "No trespass," saying, "No ball play." Who would do that? But they could do that, so...
I think the big difference is it's zoned, limited business, so something could go, like, if they could make this fit in there, it didn't require variances, it could go there without seeing this board as well. So, you know, like, if they took their existing site, hypothetically, it could possibly sit on that site right now. And if it didn't require variances, they wouldn't even be in front of this board right now. So there's also that to consider as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure what other businesses are there. I know you have the homeowner that has construction equipment next door. I think it's Ross.
Yes.
And then you have DeSalvo across the street, but that is on Empire. That's the address, is Empire. So right now, it is quite honestly a residential area.
Well, there are other businesses on Empire. You know, the cigar hut and the salon.
I know that, I know on Empire, that is the case, and that's where they're located. I'm talking about Seabury.
No, I get it, I get it, it's a residential street.
It is.
Sure.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it's an opportunity. I just am concerned, as a homeowner in that area.
Sure.
A retired homeowner, that, you know, this is where we want to live. And that was one of the reasons we moved there in 2016. Small reason, but one of the reasons.
Let me ask the applicant a question. What is, I'm looking at Google Maps here. The current site, there's a residential street, Kirkland. And it looks as though there are a couple of houses, I don't know, relatively close to your current location. And there appear to be trees buffering that. Is the transformer... Yeah, the cursors on the current transformer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what's the distance from that transformer? Is that, does anyone know if that's a residential, is that a house, a residential house?
I think it is, yeah.
That one is.
Okay, do you know what, get that far as over the month before the next meeting. It'd be nice to know.
Okay, sure.
And is that current, that current transformer is being used?
Yes.
So, is it going to be, is the proposed transformer, transformers, going to be louder, same noise?
Newer equipment is always quieter.
Okay. Okay, well, you know, maybe we can go, is that thing running all the time? So that we go out there anytime we can?
It is, yes.
Oh, do you have lights?
And it's, from a size perspective, though, it's much smaller, I'm assuming.
The newer one?
The older one.
The older one is small, I think it's probably the other way around. I don't know if we know that.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure the size comparison between the existing and the new proposed, but...
Can you do a street view, too? Like, you can get a better idea of the size. I'm just curious, how does that compare to the new?
The proposed ones?
The proposed ones.
That'd be nice to know.
Yeah, and I certainly understand that. And that's something that I can certainly get for the next meeting. But also, keep in mind that, you know, we are going to have those new transformers housed within the sound barrier walls.
Yeah, again, you are proposing to take steps that would reduce any noise that comes off the new transformers.
Sure.
I still think, you know, it might be, let's try to use what we have here to get some further information as well. And, you know, I don't know, maybe we take a look at the home values or the assessments on those two houses there over the years. But it sounds like the current substation's been there since the 60s.
And I would like to kind of revisit the lighting. I didn't, I apologize, I didn't actually bring that up as part of the...
Of the applicant?
Yeah, the applicant.
I don't want to hold Mr. Vitale here any longer.
No.
Okay, well, then stay there.
So in regards to the lighting, it is dusk to dawn. Is there a way to ensure that the lighting itself is as low-yield as possible and not impactful to the street or the neighbors?
So it would be full cutoff lighting, so it should not spill beyond.
Okay.
So it does serve a security purpose, again, because this is a substation, there is a security concern. So I can't speak exactly to the level, but that's certainly something, the light level, that's something we could look at.
Yeah, and the lighting units themselves, you know, have the ability to tilt. I don't know the exact, you know, degree level, but, you know, as, during the installation and design, you know, we can, we have the ability to install those, add a tilt that will, you know, ensure that the lighting doesn't go off-site. It's not just, let me put it up and hope that it doesn't go off the property. We can ensure that it doesn't go off the property.
Yeah, so if you could provide any documentation on how that can be, the lighting can be focused and not impactful to the surrounding structures and neighbors, that would be great, too, as well.
Yeah, absolutely, we can provide, you know, lighting details, you know, as far as what it will entail, for sure.
And is there any other lighting that will be part of the parcel other than the security lighting around the peripheral?
Yes, there will be, you know, there'll be work lights that will be a manual on-off for if, you know, somebody has to come and work at the station. They can turn those on, but they are not, you know, dusk to dawn lights. It's only the perimeter lighting that will be a dusk to dawn.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board, from either Mr. Vitale or the applicant, before we call the next speaker? All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Kristy Vitale. This must be your younger sister?
She is.
I love you.
Boy, that was easy.
Hi, I'm Kristy Vitale. I'm here to echo everything my husband says. And you said you've driven to the property. Have you all driven there? Then you've noticed that right across the road, I'd say 60 feet maybe, are bicycles. I mean, there's kids galore in that apartment community. And they're busy kids, and I hate to see them affected by this. Also, the wildlife that my husband mentioned. This spring, there was a fawn there for a number of days. We've rescued turtles, we've seen fox, there's deer. I just wonder where, you know, how they're going to travel through that pathway that they use through that space. The other thing that concerns me is, I mean, we are like David fighting Goliath. And when you have representatives and they come and say, well, this is going to be like this, and this is going to be like that. And then if they get the approval, then they start building and they put things in, and it's not what they say it's going to be. What recourse do we have? We've already given them the variances. There are security lights on the, I think it's an auto body shop on Empire. They're blinding. I don't know how these are going to be, but if they're, if they're not what they say they are, what are we going to do about it? The other, I have two questions for them. They keep saying that if they take the current substation offline, there's going to be an impact to the community. What is that impact to the community? Do we have brownouts? Do we have no electricity? What exactly is that impact? And the second question I have is, they have to cross Empire Boulevard. What impact is that going to have on, I mean, do they have to, do you have to dig up the pavement?
I mean, when they, if they were to build over on that side?
Right, right.
Oh, yeah, awful.
Yeah, and when we were here last week for the planning board, there was a different gentleman here, and he was asked about the, there's two vacant lots just up the road on the same side as the current substation. And we said, had they been looked into? And he said, well, if they were moved, if it was moved there, it would cost millions of dollars. How do we know that it would cost millions of dollars? And as far as I'm concerned, this huge conglomerate, what's a couple million dollars to them? To me, it's a big deal. To them, it's a drop in the bucket. So, yeah, those are my concerns.
Okay, if you want to address anything that Ms. Vitale said, feel free.
Sure, as far as the road crossing at Empire Boulevard, the plan is to do a... As far as the road crossing in Empire Boulevard, the plan is to do a directional bore underneath Empire Boulevard, so there wouldn't be any impact to, you know, an open cut in Empire Boulevard there. So we've definitely taken that into consideration, for sure.
Are you aware of the other sites that she mentioned? I don't know who it was before the planning board, but, you know, the ones that would cost millions.
Yeah, so I believe it's just north on Empire Boulevard. And I think it's a greater distance that would have to span, and I think there's maybe five commercial businesses and one or two residences that would have to obtain easements in order to install additional infrastructure to connect our existing connections at the current station with the new station that would go in, in that location. With the proposed location, it's roughly across the street, so really the only impact is, you know, underneath Empire Boulevard, and it's one, one property that we're impacting, which is the urgent care facility that's being built on that parcel.
So let me ask you that. Thank you, thank you for that. But having heard it, it does seem like, assuming you were able to obtain the easements and negotiate them and pay them, pay for them, it does seem like the difference, from what I heard, is a financial one. If you were to, what you propose to put on 2070, if you were able to put it north, which probably is in the town of Webster, by the way, right? Okay. But let's say you were to put it there, and let's just say it costs $5 million extra bucks. And you, I'm not looking for an answer on this tonight, but would it be, would it be as effective in that location as it would at 2070? In other words, I mean, that's asking the same question another way. Is it really just a matter of money? By the way, you know, we've heard big corporations, conglomerates, RGE is a public utility, right, Mr. White Shower?
I do believe, that's true.
Okay. And by the way, the question, as a public utility, does RGE have the right of eminent domain? Anybody know? Answer that question to, for next time. Because if you have trouble getting an easement, you could always, if you have that power of eminent domain, you can always exercise.
I believe it's always the last recourse.
Believe me. I understand. And good to see you, by the way.
My calendar still says 6:30.
I just said it was good to see you. Given the fact that it is a public utility, I know there are certain type of entities that when they come before this board, they are by law entitled to a reduced level of standard or scrutiny, whatever you want to put it. Is that any of the case here? And again, if you want to take time to answer, that's fine.
I could supply that to the board before the next meeting.
Great.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right, thanks for your comments.
Yeah, thanks for listening.
Let me just check. I don't, I don't think we have anybody on the phone or anybody that's, pardon me, that was a no?
You are clear, yes.
And same with the email?
Right.
Fantastic. Okay. All right, well, your application, but...
Yeah, is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak?
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
Okay.
So my recommendation is based on the work being done, the follow-up information that's necessary that we table?
I will second that.
And no Seeker today?
I wouldn't do the Seeker.
Yeah, correct. All right, so we have a motion by George to table for all the various reasons we discussed. Going to hopefully get some information in, both to planning board and to us. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Appreciate.
Guys, thank you very much.
Appreciation and candor. All right.
Gregory McMahon, McMahon Leroux Associates, PC. On behalf of Salvatore Fantuso, 1651 Empire Boulevard, Webster, New York, 14580. Request approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.6-C1C of the code to allow a single-family detached residence at 1651 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by Fantuso Family Brands Incorporated and is zoned limited business. SPL number 093.19-1-22. This is application 22Z-0042.
He just said your name, but may we have your name and address?
Greg McMahon from McMahon Leroux Associates, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York.
Great.
I'm here tonight representing Sam Fantuso, who couldn't be with us this evening. We are requesting a special use permit for, as Andy said, an apartment over a garage. This site at 1651 is owned by Fantuso Family Brands. The house, or former house, currently houses an office, an acupuncture office, and one Some time ago, we did receive site plan approval from the town to construct a garage, as is shown on the plan. And at that time that we received that approval, there were no plans for the second-floor small apartment, but he is now asking to construct that garage with an apartment on the second floor. There is satisfactory parking with the two apartments and the office. There are nine spaces required. We have, excuse me, we have 12 spaces proposed on the site. And with that, I guess I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Thank you. Just a few quick things. The garage spaces, will those be used for parking for the tenants? Or how would those be allocated in terms of parking spaces to assure there's enough?
One space for each apartment and one space for the office will be allotted. So each, each renter would have at least, be guaranteed of one space in the garage. If they had a second car, that would be parked in the lot. The office would have the use of one space in the garage.
Okay. Any impacts to the roadway entering and exiting off of Empire Boulevard for this parcel with the construction of this proposed garage and apartment?
We don't anticipate any. There's, it's a, you know, Empire Boulevard is fairly heavily traveled, but there's a lot of gaps. The addition of one apartment is going to be a very small impact.
Okay. Noise level, I assume noise level would maintain the same levels as what we're at right now?
Yes.
Any kind of visual buffering? Since now we're building a structure from what was originally proposed to going taller, is there any visual buffering or plantings that might be occurring?
There's currently nothing that was required as part of the site plan approval. Again, there's a large group of trees, I think that would...
Currently some stuff there, yes.
Along the buffer, and none of that's being disturbed. So as far as a buffer from, from any of the residential, that'll remain. They do, Fantuso Family Brands does own their corporate offices are just to the other side of there.
Exterior lighting would all be directed into the parcel and not out to the outsides of it?
There would be no, the only lighting would be a light next to the door on the garage, like you might have at your front residence. No parking lot lighting has been proposed.
Okay. And you, and nothing's been identified that would be a detriment to health, safety, or the general welfare if this was built?
No. Again, it is a permitted use with the special use permit in the limited business district.
Correct. I don't know if anyone knows, Andy or Pete, if they were to put an addition on the existing building and add a second apartment, would they still need a conditional use for that? Or would that still?
For a second? I don't...
So in a sense, if they, you know, if the apartment wasn't on the garage, and if it was on top of the building, or they put an addition off the back, would they need a conditional use permit to expand the existing apartment? Because it's an acupuncture apartment.
Yeah, I think once, I think that in order to have a residence in that limited business, you need the special use permit.
It's the same building, right, is the issue?
Yeah, if they were...
But if it's the same building, would he have to be here?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
So he's putting, he already has one apartment, right?
They just built up.
Right. So if he expanded the apartment for the, you know, like, the acupuncture building was acupuncture with an apartment. If they added a second apartment to that existing building, would they still need a conditional use permit?
Yes.
Okay. So I was just checking to see if there was any difference between the two as well.
Any expansion to the existing use?
Yeah, the question is the use, not where it is, because it's in the limited business, because that's especially permitted use, I believe.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Yeah, sure. Come on up.
I just need to understand where...
Well, we need you to come up, give us your name and address, please, and then feel free to give your comments.
Kelly Vought at 4 Rossman Drive.
I just need to understand where it's going. So I know where the house is, and then there's the addition part that has the apartment. This is another freestanding structure that's going on there?
No. You want to pull up, Andy, what, well, what you're pulling up, I guess?
Yeah, here's the site plan here. This is the existing building, and the proposed building is going behind it in this area.
Which is now where the parking lot is.
Right.
So they were approved for a garage?
Right. And now they're going to add an addition on top of it.
It'd be an apartment above it.
But it's going in the parking, which technically now, right now, the parking lot that backs up to basically Rossman's Drive back properties, right? That's, so it's going to have, it has the building, it has the addition that's already there on it, and there's going to be another behind that?
Yeah, and which has already been approved.
Right. And now it's just going to be tall. Correct.
Make it taller.
So what you're going to actually see then is tall, the original tall building, the side addition, and then behind that, you're going to see a tall building, again, because it's going to be taller than the half piece, you know what I'm saying? Because there's the original house and then the addition.
Yeah, it would be basically a garage with a second floor above it.
Right.
That's correct. Yeah, actually, there's the drawing, if you can see it right there.
That looks like the original, that's the original house.
That's the proposed garage. It's probably going to look very similar in character with the styling of the existing.
That's what I was thinking. It looks very similar to the house in styling, yeah.
That's all, I just needed to understand, because I didn't quite understand who you're going to put another house on top of the house that has another house.
All right. Thank you. Again, I don't see any phone calls or any electronic submissions here, and there's nobody else left in the auditorium, so we can move to consideration.
Okay.
Starting with the Seeker.
Yes, Seeker. This is a Type 2 action pursuant to Seeker, requiring no further review.
All right. And we got a second from George on that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the merits?
And the merits. I am going to move to approve the conditional use for the apartment above the garage. As the applicant stated, the means of egress aren't going to change. The parking, there's adequate parking on this site. The styling of this property will maintain within the character. Exterior lighting will be very minimal in terms of, you know, sightlines and things like that. Those are not changing onto the highway or the sidewalks, and there's no other detriments that were identified for the health or safety. So with that, I move, approve.
I'll second the approval motion. I would note that I, I believe we've, we've had the woman that just came in a few minutes ago before here on some applications that we've had, and there's been a concern about visual, you know, blocking view, I guess, out the Empire Boulevard. And there may be a little bit of that more with this two stories versus one story, but, you know, there may be, and the minimum there, I think...
I'd say right next door to the building is two stories as well.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Okay, in any event, I think that's what her concern was. So we have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You too.
All right, so we have two tabled matters already for next meeting, all right? Anything else to discuss tonight? I think we're good? All right. Well, then we'll stand adjourned, and we will see you at our August meeting, August 18th, it says on the screen there. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Have a good night.